Good afternoon. I'm City Council President Nick J. Mosby here to talk about City Council Bill 23-0428, the Mayor's Redistricting Plan. To my left, we have Councilman Z. Cohen. To my right, we have Chairman Robert Stokes, Chairman Conway, Chairman Bullock, and Vice President Sharon Green Middleton. From our offices, we have Tiffany Macklin coming in. We also have Chairman Costello, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, and we also have Dex, Aaron DeGraffin right here. I know that there are some members with some amendments. Do any members have, that are here, have amendments that they would like to present for folks to see and understand? I know that we received some emails about some amendments, so want to make sure we're good there. If not, we're gonna try to get those amendments and hand those amendments out. So I guess the idea is for us to go over, I guess, the final proposed map that factors in all of the community engagement and input from the council members, and as well as evaluate all the different amendments that was, that have been out there. So I'm gonna ask folks to kind of just patiently wait while we get these amendments, and then we'll come back. With that, are there any questions or concerns from members of the body?
Mr. President, could you, is there a visual final copy of the map with all the amendments?
Yeah, so that's what we're working on, to get that, as well as any other amendments that individual council members have. I know that they did provide some to Legislative Reference, and we will look to try to get that out. So if folks could just like hang tight, I guess right now, we're at 2:20. I would say, let's go back in recess till 2:45. If that is the change, you know what, to make it safe, let's just say to go back to recess to 3 o'clock. But again, all members in the chamber right now, none of you have amendments that you want us to take on? Is that accurate?
No, I'm good.
Okay, and then we'll just go from there. So we're gonna be in recess to right now, 3 o'clock. Hello, this is Council President Nick Mosby, reconvening CC 23-0428, Mayor's Redistricting Map. Currently, we're working with DLR to finish up the last touches of the amendment. I'm sorry for the general public, but obviously, a process of going through a map and changing the map in a couple of weeks with 14 different personalities, needs, and concerns, and a city of close to 600,000 folks with needs and concerns is a challenging process, but we're working through it. Folks have been working really hard around the clock to get us here. So we think around like 3:45, we should have those amendments that we can present to everybody, have the hard copy for the mayor's office as well as for all of us. So we're gonna come back, we're gonna put it in recess, give me to 3:45, so like 40 minutes. Good afternoon. I'm City Council President Nick Mosby, reconvening a recess hearing on CC 23-0428, Mayor's Redistricting Map. Today's October the 19th, around 3:50. We promised we would come back at 3:45. So sorry, Legislative Reference are still working on the word amendments. I mean, I'm sorry to keep coming back, we're just guestimating when they'll be able to be finished. Obviously, when you're looking at a map and you're making changes, it's a lot that they have to do. We really applaud them for all of the hard work that they've been putting in to kind of support the map. As soon as we get the amendments, we'll come back out and reconvene, but that is what we're waiting on. We're waiting for the text amendments, and it's a challenge. So we're gonna put this in recess and be back as soon as the amendments are printed. Good evening. I'm City Council President Nick Mosby, and we're reconvening City Council Bill 23-0428, the Mayor's Redistricting Plan. Want to talk through real quick where we are in the process. So it's been talked about a lot, but the mayor of the city of Baltimore, based off our charter, is responsible for bringing a map before the city council. The city council has 60 days to act on that map. The formal language is, it formally says that in city charter. The solicitor's office determined that that meant all legislative action had to take place within those 60 days. The council was real eager to ensure that we had community participation and develop town halls as well as community hearings to hear directly from the citizens of Baltimore about the proposed mayor's map. From that, from emails, from council members' input of questions and concerns, the council came up with a map that we presented on Monday. We had an additional town hall to allow community members to come out to talk about the difference between the two maps and what they favored. We gained additional information in dealing with communities, and now that has brought us here today. We're, we're gonna look at the package of amendments to the mayor's map. The plan is for us to go over the, those amendments, and at the end of this hearing, it's my hope that we will be able to vote yea or nay and move on this very short, but complicated and arduous process. I want to point out two things that we've already communicated, but I think it's important to continue to stress because it is pretty technical and somewhat confusing, but there's two really important dates as we move forward today. If we are able to vote it out today, meaning we're going to try to vote it out as a committee as a whole, and then double read it today, it will be given to the mayor, and there's two important dates after that. One, October the 30th, where it's the last day that the mayor could veto, and the council could still take action within those 60 days, or November the 6th, which is basically the last day, because that's the last regularly scheduled meeting of the city council in that 60-day window, November the 6th, in which is the last day for the mayor to sign. If the mayor does not take any action, this is all the opinion from the city solicitor at the moment, then it's basically a pocket veto, and the map that the mayor originally proposed will go into effect. This council has attempted to work with the administration to ensure that we get them our map, so they can have time to provide us the opportunity of our full legislative autonomy to, if there was a veto, to vote it yea or nay, for our override perspective. So that's where we stand today. Before we kind of go, I'll wait to, I'll wait to, wait to hear that. Members on your desk, there are four amendments, I'd like to call them out. There's the package of amendments. At the top left, it's Mosby III, dated 19 October 2023. There's a second amendment. There's a second amendment of Dorsey, 19 October 23, a third, Dorsey, 29, 2023, and a fourth, Torrance, 18, 2023. Now, I spoke to the council member prior to the hearing, the Torrance, 18, October 2023, were amendments that were already on the comprehensive map, the comprehensive amendment map, that's the Mosby, 19 October 2023. So we're gonna vote on the Mosby, 19th, the one that the council has proposed as it relates to amendment changes. We're gonna vote on that one first. If that is to pass, that essentially means that the ones that's embedded in the Torrance amendment also passes, and then we would just have two additional votes, which would be on the Dorsey's amendments. So just want to make sure everybody's clear. Is there any questions or concerns? Chairman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. President. You referenced Mosby, October 19, the, the package, that's the one with the staple and multiple pages. There's also a Mosby III, October 19, which is just a, a one-pager.
Yes.
I apologize if I missed that.
It's all good. So it's the one pager that we're talking about. These are the main amendments. Now, obviously, this is a foreign language, so we're gonna put the actual map up, not just so we can all see it, but so the community can see it, and we're gonna go through the map and show it at a district level, and then we're gonna turn for any additional questions or concerns, and then we, we'll proceed.
Mr. President, I just want to make a clar-
I'm sorry, Councilman Torrance?
I just want to make a clarification for the public. The amendments I originally had were to the mayor's map, so that they understand the difference. Like, you have the alternative map, which incorporates the already, incorporates the amendments, so that we're clear, so that, I just want to make sure that there's a distinction, so that you understand why, if we vote on your amendments, then mine are included. I just want to make sure that it was clear to the public.
Yeah, so the, the, the map that the council came up with, Councilman Torrance, I guess, appreciated hearing from the community and appreciate the amendments that we did on that map, and then Councilman Torrance asked for those same amendments. I, I would assume, in lieu of the mayor's map moving forward, you would be amending the mayor's map. So that, that's why I said, so if we're gonna go with the larger comprehensive one, if we vote that out, then basically, the Torrance amendments are sustained, and we will only have two additional amendments to vote for. You should have four. What are your three others?
Sorry, Mr. President.
Yeah.
So I, we have two Dorsey amendments, September 29 and October 19.
Correct.
So that's two.
Yep.
We have a unofficial reprint, October 19, that's a package of multiple pages.
Yeah, that's not an amendment.
It's just a reprint.
That's just a reprint.
It's, I, thank, thank you, Mr. President.
No problem, Mr. Chair.
And then, okay, so, okay, I understand. Now, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, so we have four amendments. Are we ready to go? Are we ready to go? Are you on?
Let's go to here. Oh, right here. There he is. There he is.
Just real quick, I think it's important to note, when you look through the map, it's all consistent with the variance of 5-plus, 5-minus percent based off change. Obviously, we wanted the map to be as contiguous as possible, we've talked about that as well, as well as ensuring that we were factoring in it being compact. So what we're going to do is we're gonna go, I guess, district by district, just real quick. So each council member will see, so this is the first district. Again, it's all laid out in the, the text that you have before you. It's consistent with what we've talked about in the past, in full disclosure. The one little piece, it's a couple of blocks north of Patterson Park, we just simply were not able to figure out a way to bring that back in the first. One, based off of the first's population, because that's one of the largest growing districts in the city, the first and 11th, and two, because the 13th right above is one of the districts that have lost the most. So from a geographical perspective, that had to expand, and the first had to decrease. Any questions? All right, number two, this is second district to the right, this basically is very consistent with the mayor's map, and there, there was no changes for number two to the mayor's map. Madam Chair, any questions? Madam Chair? Okay, all right, please go to number three. The third district, this is, we do have two amendments from Councilmember Dorsey. Some of the changes from the mayor's map is just that bottom right corner in Bel Air Edison, again, talking about the 13th, the 13th boundaries needed to expand northeast and south, and it picked up one precinct in the north. Any questions? You go with Senator.
No, Mr. President. I'm fully in support of the 13th district retaining that precinct, 8002, and even if we were to go with the mayor's map, I have an amendment drafted just to do that, to satisfy Councilman Glover and I, in being in agreement that it's perfectly fine for that precinct to remain in District 13.
We got it. So just remember, when we get to the end and we start talking about amendments, let's just walk through that, so everybody's on the same page. All right, please go to number four. This is the fourth district. There was only one slight change, and that is at the lower bottom, which is, I believe, is Homewood, Sherwood Gardens. It just comes down one precinct to make that area all-in-one a district. Can we go to five? This is five. No boundaries changed here. Chairman Schleifer was adamant, he wanted to try to figure out a way to keep all of his constituents, and we were able to do that, not breaking up any communities. And Howard Park expressed some concern there, so we were able to work that out. As you can see, that's one change that's at the lower southern edge of the district. If we go to six. Six is one of those things where we heard from the community, Medfield and Ho Heights, they participated, I believe, in every town hall that we had, but we also received a lot of questions and concerns via email and social media. So we were able to instill fitting inside of compactness, continuity, from a statistical perspective, sticking with the, with our charter as relates to what the statute says we have to govern, redistrict and buy, and remove that and place that back in the seventh district. If you notice, that is also one of the amendments that we just talked about from James Torrance. So again, if we were not to accept the larger package, we could go forward with James Torrance amendments on the mayor's map, but for now, in the package, it removes that Medfield, Ho Heights area out of the sixth and puts it back in the seventh. You can see the same off of Liberty Heights, down in the Forest Park region, it's the same way. We were able to keep Forest Park together, and again, that was a request by the community. If we could go to the next district. District seven, which is near and dear to my heart, that was my district as a council member. You see the two changes. One, it moved a district on the west side, on Liberty Heights, remember, we moved that back to the, to the sixth, so that is eliminated. That's why we see the red line, that basically shows the delta between, the difference between the mayor's map and our map, and then also the Medfield that we just talked. The only other main difference is the loss of Eastelwood and Sandtown Winchester to the ninth district, like we talked about at the beginning, and we'll go further when we see the 13th. The ninth and the 13th were one of the districts that reduced in population the most and had to grow geographically the most, the ninth being the largest. So it had to come north, as well as it had to go further down to the south, and we'll see once we start talking about the ninth. Are we good there? So, council members, when I go through your district, if you want to interrupt or say anything, please do not hesitate to do so. If we could go, oh, yes.
I just want to affirm that these amendments are amendments that I include in my amendment package. However, due to the community feedback of Sandtown Winchester, I'm not in favor of this map, because the community and I started a conversation about building a $13 million rec that I want to see through after the loss of our 13-year-old in my district. So I just want to make sure that's on the public while I agree with the other amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Council Member. Next, can we go to eighth district? The eighth district is pretty much intact, too. I mean, obviously, it's, if you can tell, going through this process, the ones that are literally bordered by the county, the flexibility is less, you know, it's really just more about bringing them in or expanding them out, because they're landlocked, and just like we saw in the fifth or in the second, the eighth pretty much stays intact, as it, as it is currently. We go to the ninth. Now, the ninth district was probably the toughest district to figure out a plan for. Again, it, it had some of the largest amount of reduction in population, so we had to expand up to North Avenue. If you could see, North Avenue basically all the way over to the right, and then when you come down in the Popleton area, it had to expand a precinct over. The red line again is the mayor's, the difference between our map and, the difference between the mayor's map and how we amended this map. And that was because the mayor's map, the proposed map expanded the ninth further south, but also broke up the Morrel Park community, and we heard from Morrel Park, I believe, at every council hearing, that they wanted to stay together, that they believed in the councilwoman there, and they wanted to keep her. They also said that Councilman Bullock is an amazing man, but they had already started working, and they didn't want their community in two districts. That was a core competency of this process, we tried to keep communities together as much as possible, but obviously, that is not possible in certain cases, where precincts break up communities, and we're already tight on real estate and population. So we could go to the 10th. So the 10th, geographically, is a pretty large district. The proposed map called for connecting it across Middle Branch into South Baltimore, as well as up in the Ridgely's Delight area, as you can see those two red spots. The recommendation from the expert and from the council that we put forth from an amendments perspective, kept that intact. That would have split some of the South Baltimore neighborhood, and just from a, a continuity perspective, it was connected by a bridge, which made it legally sufficient, but it still presented potentially some, some issue and some, some concern. So we could go to the 11th. Again, council members, stop me if you want to stop to talk about your, now, just like we talked about the first, the count, the number, the fastest-growing district in the city is the 11th, and that's why you see a lot of markup, because there's a lot of jockeying back and forth to ensure that some of the communities and some of the areas around it took over some of the population. So from a geography, geography perspective, it shrunk, but obviously, from a population perspective, it's continuing to expand. Again, just want to point out, the red lines are the lines that the mayor originally had in the proposed map, and then where you see the actual black outline is what we're proposing today in the comprehensive package of amendments. Number 12, if we go to 12. 12th district also needed to expand significantly. As you can see, again, we took the 12th district all the way down to the water, per the request of, I mean, just the need from a population perspective and the significant growth in the first district. We also had to bump it over a little bit to the east and bump it up in the north, and you can see how we expanded it there. We can go to the 13 now? 13 district, again, you can see the two bottom, we talked about this at the beginning of the map, but that top corner and, and bottom, right, we had to, we were able to grow. Now, obviously, sometimes you can look at a box, and the box could be the same shape and look like the same size, but the population could be totally different inside of that box, as relates to numbers. One of the key things is that variance that we talked about, the plus or minus five, to stay in accordance with good practice, or in things that will be defensible for any legal action. If we could go down to 14. So this is the 14th district, it's, it's wide, not long. Some, one of the main changes is just that hardwood that was in the mayor's map, and then returning Clifton Park back to the 14th. This was probably the hardest part of this entire process, was the park, Darley Park, smaller area right to the south, community really wanted, and then Chum, the larger area, right to the west, kind of really want the park. Obviously, both of them own the park, because they are right there with the park, and this was really a tough back and forth from a council perspective and working with the community, as well as working with the council members that served there. The reality is, Clifton Park, Patterson Park, Jordan Hill Park, and all of our amazing parks and resources are owned and operated and supported by all of Baltimore, and we want the community members to understand and know that, but I'm pretty sure that Chairman Stokes, as well as Councilwoman Ramos, will work together with their respective communities to continue to support the park. And with that, that's all 14 districts. If you could go back to the main map, Mr. DeGraffin, right? At this time, I'll open up the floor for any questions and/or concerns. Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna go and start looking at the amendments and voting on the amendments. Again, unless there's any questions or concerns, there should be four amendments on the members' desk. We're gonna go over the first comprehensive amendment, amendment, which we just talked about, and we just looked at on that map. If we vote that out, then it's basically sustained Torrance's map, and we will not have to vote on Torrance's amendment, and then we will go to the two Dorsey amendments. Are there any questions or concerns moving forward? All right, at this point, I'll entertain a motion for the Mosby amendment.
It's been moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And properly second. We're gonna have to take a roll call for a vote. Mr. Green? Aye.
Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Coe?
No.
Councilwoman McCray? Councilman Dorsey?
No.
Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Councilman Schreiter?
Yes.
Councilman Torrance?
No.
Councilman Burnett? Absent. Councilman Bullock?
Nay.
Councilwoman Porter?
Nay.
Councilman Costello?
Aye.
Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Councilman Glover?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Mr. Green, what's the count?
Eight yeas, six nays. No, who's a nays?
Measure it.
And one absent.
All right, so that amendment is approved. That eliminates the other amendment because we voted in the comprehensive. The next two amendments are from the sponsors from Councilman Dorsey. At this time, Councilman Dorsey, would you like to walk us through or talk to us about your amendment?
Thank you, Mr. President. The shorter of the two amendments is included in the president's amendment, so it will be redundant and...
No, no, it's not. The Morgan Ghost district is not.
The shorter of the two amendments is precinct 8002.
Oh, okay, okay.
On the district border of three and 13. So the longer of the two is...
The ghost?
A ghost precinct that would move five properties from a precinct in District 14 to District 3, four of which are part of the Morgan State and State of Maryland property, one of which is part of Herring Run Park. I would only move this amendment forward as written if Councilwoman Ramos were to second it. So I'll just put it on the floor as a motion. If Councilwoman Ramos wants to second it, then we can vote on it. If not, I will make an alternative proposal, Mr. President.
There's been a motion. Is there a second? There is no second. The amendment will not move forward. And then there's a second amendment?
Mr. President, I would propose a verbal alteration to this amendment.
To which amendment?
The same one I just discussed, which is eight pages long. The only alteration I would propose to it is that if you look at it, it lists five sets of block lot numbers.
Yeah.
I would propose an altered version that just moves the first four of those block lots to the appropriate list, place in the list on the second page, and leaves only 3948004 on page one. I discuss this at DLR. I believe they understand it. The effect of this would be an amendment to only move the small portion of Herring Run Park from District 14 to District 3.
Second.
So it's moved and properly seconded. Before we vote, do you have something to say, council? I saw you grabbed the mic. Chairman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. President. For the sponsor, can, can he explain in a little more detail exactly? I'm not exactly sure I understand what it does.
I'm sorry, I had to explain what?
Could the sponsor please explain exactly what the amendment does?
Yes, the amendment, if you look on the map that is on the screen right now, there is a blob here with no streets in it, right immediately north of Lake Montebello. This blob right here in the middle of the screen, that is a portion of the existing precinct 9006, which is in District 14. The list of five block lots on page one of this amendment is five properties contained within that blob, four of which are property of the State of Maryland and Morgan State, one of which is property of Baltimore City, Wreck and Parks, and is a very, very small part of Herring Run Park. This amendment, by having just 394804 on page one, and by moving the other four block lots to the following page, would move only that little bit of Herring Run Park from this precinct in District 14 into District 3.
Thank you, Mr. President. One more question for the sponsor, please.
Yes.
So to confirm, Morgan State, that, that portion of Morgan State University campus would stay in the 14th district, is that correct?
Correct.
And to confirm the second part, the one parcel that is in question, which is thirty nine, block 3948 lot 004?
Correct.
Is a parcel that is owned by mayor and city council and controlled by Wreck and Parks and part of what is known as Herring Run Park, is that correct?
Yes, it's a portion of Herring Run Park referred to as Hall Springs that is only accessible from the third district.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, sponsor.
Thank you. Chairman Schleifer?
Yeah, I just have a question, because again, we're just looking at pages of blocks and lots. On page number seven, in the end, on block 3994, I noticed that when looking at this pattern, seems to be continuous in numbers, yet block 3994 lot 002 is missing. So I just wanted to know why that was.
This list was compiled from a comprehensive list of all the properties in this precinct that was provided to DLR from the Department of Planning. These numbers come from a data pull from ESTAT. My assumption is that there is no such property as 3994002, which could easily happen if, for example, 3994001 or 3994003 were at some point in the last 250 years consolidated with 3994002. That property could have easily just gone out of existence.
Okay, I mean, because I, just when looking at it, it seems like everything seems to be continuous, and that happens to be there's a one, a three, a four, a five, and a six, and a seven. So I guess my concern, without knowing one way or another, is if there's actually like just one house or one lot that would essentially be in a different district.
No, I believe it's because the property doesn't exist. For example, if you look at page six in the third, the center column, the sixth line down, you'll see 390, 3970F214, and then the next entry is 3970F216. So there is also no 3970F215, you know, and I'm sure that if I go through this list, I could find numerous other properties that simply don't exist and therefore are not listed.
Okay.
Thank you. So there is a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. If there is not any additional unreadiness, we will proceed for a vote. Hearing and seeing none, the committee receives this amendment as an unfriendly amendment. So just, it was important for the folks of the committee to understand and know that. Mr. Green, if you could proceed with the vote.
President Mosby?
No.
Vice President Middleton?
No.
Councilman Coe?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray?
Nay.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Conway?
No.
Councilman Schreiter?
No.
Councilman Torrance?
No.
Councilman Burnett? Absent. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Can you say it again? Yes. You say yes.
Councilwoman Porter?
Nay.
Councilman Costello?
No.
Councilman Stokes?
No.
Councilman Glover?
No.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Could you tell us to vote, Mr. Green?
Four yeas, ten nays, one absent.
So this proposal, this amendment fails four to ten and one. With that, that's all the amendments on the desk. I call for a motion to proceed City Council Bill 23-04 to eight to second reader as amendment.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. What we'll do is do a roll call. Mr. Green?
Vice President Mosby, sorry.
Yes, yes.
Vice President Middleton?
Yes.
Councilman Coe?
No.
Councilwoman McCray?
Nay.
Councilman Dorsey?
No.
No.
Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schreiter?
Schreiter?
Yes. I wasn't sure he was talking about me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Schreiter. Councilman Schreiter.
Sorry.
Councilwoman.
Yes.
Councilman Torrance? Councilman Burnett? Absent. Councilman Bullock?
No.
Councilwoman Porter?
Nay.
Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Councilman Glover?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Mr. Green, what's the vote?
Eight yeas, six nays, one absent.
So Council Bill 2304 passes on to second reader as amended. If you could give us five minutes, we're going to come back into the special session of the Baltimore City Council to hear this bill again. Thank you.